Please call the roll.
Ms. Cervi, here.
Ms. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Como.
Here.
Dr. Cooperstol.
Here.
Dr. Jimenez.
Here.
Ms. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Corburg.
Here.
Mr. Spivey.
Excused.
Thank you.
The board of education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of June 7th, 2021 is called to order. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho'k'unk' people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho'k'unk' land and the sacred lands of all indigenous people. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approve agendas presented.
Second.
Tonight's agenda has been previously distributed to the board. I would like to entertain a motion, which came from Brad Corburg, with a second from Don Como, to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion has carried. I believe we do not have anybody registered to speak this evening, so we will move on to the superintendent's consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, then with the motion by Mr. Corburg, seconded by Ms. Como, the items on the superintendent's consent agenda are approved as presented. We will move on to the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, with the motion by Mr. Corburg, seconded by Ms. Como, the items on the board's consent agenda are approved as presented as well. So we will move on to the information portion of the meeting this evening, so we will be discussing OE2, emergency superintendent succession.
Thank you for this operational expectation monitoring report. So one thing that I want to provide, you know, for each of these informational items is kind of a connection to coherent governance, as well as a little bit of context to understand how that fits in there and maybe what expectations are for each of those items. So this operational monitoring is a part of our governance structure. And in this monitoring report, you know, what we're asking is the board to discuss the report and indicate if the board agrees or disagrees with the administration's indication of compliance, or if further information is required before a determination could be made. This monitoring report will be on the consent agenda at the next board meeting for consideration of approval, if it moves forward from here. So the operational expectations monitoring part OE2, emergency superintendent succession, is relatively simple. It asks that the superintendent create a succession list with at least two names that will fill in on an emergency basis, and this list will be filed in the superintendent's office and made readily available to board members and administrators. It was filed on September 10th, 2020. And there is a copy of that plan listed there. And our determination from the administration is that we are in compliance with that operational monitoring expectation.
So are there any comments or suggestions from the board members regarding this OE, emergency superintendent succession? Or do we feel that the superintendent's recommendation is okay, which would be in compliance? And again, the vote will happen at the next meeting, but just kind of wanted to get a feel from the board.
I have no questions or concerns about this monitoring report.
Anybody else? Sounds good. Then we will move on then to the results monitoring report, R 3.2 involves citizenship.
Mr. Jimenez, can I pause you for a second?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but moving back to the consent agendas, usually we do need a vote for both of those. And so normally there's a roll call vote, but if we could do a voice vote for both of those.
Okay, typically.
I guess we don't know exactly how we back up to that.
We can't. How about, how about let us finish up the results monitoring report 3.2, we'll go back to it. Typically, what I'm used to with Robert's rules is that without objection, it is approved. We don't necessarily need a vote, but if we do need a vote, then we'll take one.
We've done it historically, so I guess I don't know 100% if it's absolutely necessary or not, so.
Okay, well, let's go back to it right after this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. R 3.2.
Yeah, so results monitoring report, R 3.2 involves citizenship. Once again, it's part of our monitoring as a part of our governing structure. Just for some context, we split out the components of R 2 and R 3 because of the length of these reports and due to the timeliness of presenting information to the board as it becomes available. We ask that the board discuss the report and once again indicate agreement or disagreement with the administration's indication of reasonable progress. And the full monitoring report will be presented in October for consideration of approval. So we're rolling this up throughout the course of the year, and then it'll be all brought together at one point for approval down the road. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mike LaHuckee.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight's results policy has two different indicators, and the first is co-curricular participation in two or more. You'll see this again next month as far as, as part of our redefining ready indicators, so this is a precursor of that. To give some context of what we're looking at here, well, we had that COVID thing happen this year, and that'll be a common theme when I present data, that there'll be some, some impact, but there are still some takeaways that we can take from looking at this data. Our fall co-curricular participation was low, and winter and spring tended to increase. You can see, though, when we do look at the chart, you see the gaps that occur between some of our reference groups. Even with a smaller sample size, I still think that's a valid data point. And when we talk about next steps, look at co-curricular participation, these numbers will help drive some of our decision making. Whether they have athletic and activity directors at the different schools in the district. Because those gaps are significant. But I anticipate that at this time next year, when I present the co-curricular two or more, the numbers will be significantly higher when we're back in person or school looks a little more normal for the entire school year. Elementary is noticeably absent. If you have children or you've experienced the LaCrosse School District, you know that many co-curricular activities are not offered by the school as much as they're offered by the Boys and Girls Club, or Park and Rec, or private agencies in the community. So our elementary numbers would be very low. We do have some extracurricular or co-curricular at the elementary, but it's fairly inconsistent amongst buildings. It's more teachers that volunteer because they have an interest in chess, or jump roping, or some activity. So it's harder to track the elementary. The middle school or high school things get a little more regular between our buildings, and it allows us to do better comparisons between grades six and eight, we banded together, and then grades nine through 12. Is there any questions? I'll kind of break this one into two indicators. Are there any specific questions about the co-curricular aspect of results policy 3.2?
I have a question about LaHuckee, and I'm, that's how it is, because I just can't remember. Is this the same report that Dr. Harsy has normally presented about when, the report on how many students are signing up for these activities, or is that separate? That relies on the self-reports from schools?
Yeah, that's a completely different report, but there's some overlapping information.
Okay, so my question just is, can you just explain how these numbers are reported?
Sure. Well, that, you know, if you want behind the curtain a little bit. What we have to do a lot with our data is reconfigure our student information system. So everything flows through our student information system. To be able to pull things by reference groups, when, when parents or children sign up for the school year, maybe they, they choose what ethnicity best represents them. That filter, then, when I run the data through, is how I'm able to break down the data that you see here like that. So when there's a club after school, there's a roster that's turned in that's indicated within our student information system, and then I can run reports that have this information broken down.
Okay, that's, that was, got my question, which is, so there's a roster for all of these extracurriculars, that's where the report?
Correct. Yep, within our student information system, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members?
Who's the director of the co-curricular program? Is this Joe, is this when Joe Baron used to be?
Sure, yeah. Each, each school, each middle school and high school has someone designated for that.
Okay, but was he the overall district one?
He, he does some of the reports. I would say each school has their own designated.
I couldn't remember if they were like grouped under every one umbrella, or the school trial had their own.
Any other questions?
It's an interesting segue when you talk about how we get data to the board, because the second part of the indicator is, is more of a longer journey, I would say, to collect the data. So let me start by saying, results policies in general, what you're looking for, you've identified areas that you'd like to see results in, correct? As a district, then what we do is we choose indicators that we believe gives you the data that you're looking for. Selfishly on our end, what we try to do is pick the data that we think will influence school outcomes the most that are aligned to the results policy. There's two components to that. We have to say the why and the how, right? If I go to staff and say, "Well, you, you need to do this because the school board wants the data," that's a bad look for everyone involved, right? So what we do instead is we say, "Here's why we want the data, and here's how it can help students." And that brings me to the ACP process, which is the background, I would say, of indicator two. Academic career, academic and career pathway has been state law since 2015. And it's an all-hands-on-deck situation. We have, you know, that, that question, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" That starts early, right? And, and that conversation happens, starting in kindergarten, it starts at home, it starts, and it continues through the courses that you take as you explore different careers. That's a common question. So what we're trying to do, and this is where we're a bit selfish, I would say, on the school district part, is we want to improve our systems. We don't want children to fall through the cracks when it comes to determine that next step. And so that involves some intentionality of systems. So I would say our work in the last year has been identifying what are the grade level indicators for sixth grade that we want to hone in on for seventh grade? For eighth and ninth and 11, I think we have a pretty good indicator, and that is the counseling, the individual counseling sessions that happen with families and staff. That is, I would say, an aggregate of all the conversations and all the data points that we have going to that meeting to say, "Okay, if this is what you want to do, here's the pathway to get there, here are the courses that you can take, you can do this." And it's, it's, like I said, all hands on deck. We have the future centers, we have counselors, we have teachers. Everyone who touches a student, I think it's involved in the academic and career pathway process. So these results policies are a chance, not just to show data to you, but to improve our district and student outcomes for students. So with that being said, it's a living organism. So this data that you see in my, it's my fault, but I was a little too specific and said in sixth grade, "We're going to learn about learning styles." They do take learning styles inventories in sixth grade. They also take it in an eighth grade and in 10th grade, because if you can imagine what you believe in, that you're going to be in sixth grade differs as you get older. And so that is why the data you see is specifically for the individual counselor conferences. What we have to do in our work for the next year, then, is to indicate what are those specific benchmarks that we want for each grade level, and then I'll be able to report the data and break it down for y'all in, in that way. So it is ongoing work for sure, and the Department of Public Instruction helps us out a great deal. They provide us the software, it's called Zello. I don't know why it's called Zello, it's an interesting name. But it has within, within it, a lot of opportunities for students to explore different pathways. You can take virtual college visits, you could say, "Hey, if I'm a plumber, what are the courses? And what are the, what are the things that I need to know to be a successful plumber? If I'm going to Western, if I'm going straight into the world of work? What are the pathways?" And if I choose that pathway, it goes into what are, you know, what is an approximate salary that you would receive? And so you have these discussions, then, with counselors and your parents. You can do this from home, and it's really a, a nice piece of software. It's also one that requires a fair amount of training on the teacher end to be able to interpret and guide students through that. That's ongoing work. We did have some pilot data this year, though. I wanted to give you some indication of what that data looks like. And if you look at the other parts of this indicator two, you'll see these are students that have self-identified a particular learning style, or a career cluster that they're interested in. As I said, you can, you can look at individual courses that will, you'll need to get into a particular university. There, you can put your letters of recommendation in there, transcripts, and we can have that direct communication with the post-secondary institution. There's a lot of setup and work on that, but I think it's exciting, and I do think that it would tie in well to results indicator 3.2. If you look at the data for the, the counseling, I would say that that was somewhat sporadic based on building. We saw some of our buildings in the 80th percentile, the 80% range, and we saw some at the 50 or even upper 40 range. So those are things, I think, once we get back into a face-to-face, we will be able to do better in, in that regard. What you, that, what you measure is what you value. And so now, when I have that discussion with the academic and career pathway team, and we look at some of this data together, I think, I think that'll help with intentionality going forward. Do you have any questions about indicator two in the results policy 3.2?
Anybody on the board have any questions? All right, I guess not. Okay. So then, overall, does the board feel comfortable with 3.2? Are there any comments or concerns with 3.2 as a whole? Not hearing any. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. LaHuckee, for that. And then let us move back then to the consent agenda items, so we can get a, a vote on those. Thank you, Ms. Stegerwall, for keeping me on track. So if I could have a, I think we had a motion, both of them were by Mr. Corburg, moved, and Ms. Como seconded. So all those in favor of approving the superintendent's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. And then same with the board consent agenda, moved by Mr. Corburg, seconded by Ms. Como. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. All right, so now we will move back to our information item, 7.03, the achievement gap reduction report. Dr. LaHuckee, or Dr. Engel?
Yeah, once again, I'll tee up Mr. or Dr. LaHuckee here. So the achievement gap reduction report, this report is required by the Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, law in State Statute 118.44, so we're required to bring it to the school board. The AGR law is an extension of the program previously called Student Achievement Guarantee in Education, or SAGE, and provides funding to eligible school districts to put in place certain strategies to close the achievement gap. There's a few more strategies allowed now under AGR as opposed to SAGE, including one-to-one tutoring and instructional coaching. Last year, or for this school year, the school district received $2.4 million in AGR funds. State law requires reports to be submitted to the school board at the end of each semester. Dr. Harsy, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's a good introduction. Dr. LaHuckee will touch on some of our strategies with the district, so.
It's actually a really great introduction in approximately half of my presentation. So, so with that being said, I will keep going. Thank you, Dr. Engel. Yeah, AGR, we are in compliance with our instructional coaches that are at the elementary level. This is a program K through three. So we bring data to the board twice a year and relating, related to reading and math achievement within our district, which is an interesting year to take a look, because here's an opportunity where we do have some longitudinal data to help wrap our head around some of the things that we saw in the last year. So what we didn't have this year, there are two kinds of assessments. Well, there's more than two kinds of assessments, but let's talk about two kinds. The first is universal screener, and universal screeners are wonderful, wonderful for board reports. They rank and sort students, and they allow us to get a, a lot of, I would say, zoomed-out data to help just look at a district or at a school to see how we're doing achievement-wise, right? We did not have any universal screeners this year that I can report on at this time. We did have the Wisconsin Forward, we had the ACT, those results are embargoed. In the case of Wisconsin Forward, we haven't even seen them yet. Once the state allows us to share that data, they'll be on future board reports, okay? So without that universal screener, and traditionally what we've used is the STAR assessment, is the one that I've spoke of in the past. We've transitioned to a new universal screener called iReady. And let me explain the difference between STAR and iReady. STAR is norm reference, meaning that we compare, like, every year, 40 million kids take the STAR assessment. It's been normed so that when I take, pretend I'm a student, if I take the results, then I can compare my results to those 40 million, and it'll rank and sort me based on those outcomes, right? Then we, we do internally, is we have a linking study, and we said, "If you score this on the Wisconsin Forward, you'll probably score this." And we can make some decisions, and it helps put kids in interventions and ranking and sorting. That's, that's the use of it, right? Criterion referenced is what iReady is, meaning that we've identified, or there are standards, and my next report is the standards that hopefully we'll adopt in the school district of LaCrosse. So criteria reference is different, meaning that each standard is assessed, and student performance based on that particular standard is monitored. And what that means instructionally is that, instead of saying you're at the 42nd percentile, "What are you good at? What are you bad at?" It's kind of hard to say. This is a standard that you're knocking it out of the park, this is a standard that you need some remediation or another opportunity, or taught in a different way. Because of the iReady being criterion referenced, it is a lot more diagnostic for our staff, in which we will get some zoomed-out data, and I'll, I'll show you what that'll look like in just a second, because I have a template for future AGR reports that I want to share with you. So it does serve, I would say, that zoomed-out in the board needs, but more importantly, in my opinion, it serves the teacher so that they can really move the needle with an individual student. Let's see. So one of the, two reasons we didn't take the universal screener this year, one is taking a universal screener that's computer adaptive at home isn't very valid and reliable. Some kids get extra support in that situation where they, those scores may not be exactly what they should be. The second is, this was going to be our rollout year for training staff, and to do that in a virtual setting, when they have it administered it themselves for the first time, to be able to analyze that data and use it for instruction, that was a bit too much. So we came up with a different strategy, and it's one that we've always had in the district, or had for a number of years. And we've actually elevated then our local assessments to what I'm talking about tonight for the AGR. For the reading assessments, it takes two forms. The first is a letter-sound assessment, which is our kindergarten assessment. We've given this for years, and there's some longitudinal historical data that you can look at. We also give something called the DRA2 to our spring kindergarten students, and the DRA2 is a reading assessment. So we expect our students that are kindergartners in the spring to be at a level three, and that means they're basically on track. Because we've given this assessment, I've reported on it for a number of years, I do have longitudinal data for the kindergarten. And what I would highlight or have you take a look at is look at season compared to season. I think that's the best way to look at this. Where were we at in 2019 in the winter? Where were we at 2019 in the spring, or in, in the winter? So compare the same season, but in different years. So based on that, we saw a hit, a drop in our scores at kindergarten for the reading. We were at about the 58%, where traditionally we've been at mid 70s, right? So that's a pretty big hit for our reading achievement. With that being said, what I have noticed with some of the data that I can't share yet, yet is that, that, that reading lapse tends to eradicate the older the student is. So some of the data that I'll present on for our older students indicates less of a gap than what we would traditionally have seen, but it makes common sense, right? Our kindergartners engaging in a virtual environment, it's probably the hardest audience to reach. And, and so we saw the biggest achievement gaps is what I'm showing you tonight, whereas I would say some of the data we'll see going forward will not be as big of a gap. Our math scores, this is where we had to be a little more creative. In the past, we've used STAR and also a created local assessment. So what we did is we took that local assessment, that standard space, and we've essentially tried to norm it internally and present that data as what proficiency looks like. And so you can see from fall, winter to spring, some growth in mathematics in first and second grade, but you can see in mathematics at kindergarten, once again, there is a dip from this last year. Now, I don't think we know the true impact of the pandemic until we come back in the fall. We're, we have students that were in different situations that once we get back to some semblance of normalcy in our schools, can breathe a little bit, they'll be connected, we'll have new teachers and be able to move forward. So I'm really interested in that universal data from the fall to give us our launch point, I think, of our next steps instructionally going forward. The last thing that I'd like to share is that this is our fifth year of the AGR data with the state or our contract with the state, meaning that we have to re-up and resubmit a new plan to the state. So in working with staff, what you see is the new template for AGR. And in this situation, it's reading and math achievement and it uses iReady data. It will allow us also to break down by reference groups going forward, so we'll be able to really track our reference groups to see their learning achievement throughout the year. So this is what we will do for reading and math for future AGR reports. It's, I tried to take the same approach as our general academic data, meaning you'll get the one-year snapshot, but then the three-year longitudinal look at data going forward as well. So I know I threw a lot at you with the AGR. Are there any questions that you'll have?
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Thank you very much again, Dr. Luhaki, and I believe we'll move on to the annual academic standards then.
Yeah, so the, this is an annual approval by the school board of academic standards is required by law, state statute one twenty point one two sub one three. The DPI has a rigorous process to identify and reevaluate academic standards on an ongoing basis. School districts generally adopt the standards the DPI adopts. Academic standards are required to be adopted at the, by the school board at the first board meeting of the school year. So the standards will be on the agenda as an action item at the July 19th board meeting for consideration of approval. And Dr. Harsy, do you have anything to add about standards?
No, this has been an annual, I say no when I speak. I would just say that this has been an annual report that we've brought before the board the last several years and it's shy, just shy of boilerplate. We've been, you know, bringing the same, something that the board has laid their eyes on before, save maybe for some of our new board members.
The only other, I would add two pieces to that. Board formally approves standards, then we connect and make it public for parents. It'd be the foundation. In Wisconsin, we do have local autonomy over our curriculum, essentially what we teach aligned to the standards. Not all states are like that. Some of the states will have state-generated curriculum that we all use. We have the opportunity to customize it and add in La Crosse elements whenever we can. The second thing I would add is I added in the attachment of the curriculum cycle. The DPI does have a rollout plan that does get adjusted from time to time, so we can anticipate when different standards will be adopted by the state, which then on our end allows us to be intentional in planning, knowing that, okay, this is social studies, they'll have some new standards. We want to make sure that we have resources available so that is a successful rollout and we can budget and allocate our time accordingly for the different content areas as they come up. It's tied to implementation science. If you notice, not many are in full implementation and that's due to our work with standard space grading. That is a big lift in, in something that is, I think, one of the most powerful things you can do for instruction is to identify essential standards and provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum to all students. And that's the work of standard space grading. So that is, means that all of our content areas are really taking a deep dive on what are the essential elements. It doesn't mean that we don't teach all the standards. What are the standards that we want to teach to mastery? And, and I, and I know when I've spoken of results policy three point five and three point six, that was some of the discussion of that night. I, I'm very excited about this work. I think it will make a great difference for our students. And so that's predicated, of course, on us having standards. That's what I would add.
Any questions from the board? I guess the only question I would have for you is, is there anything, I mean, the standard-based grading is a huge lift. You're absolutely correct. Are there any other things of note in changes of the standards that you would, you know, from the previous standards to the new standards?
I would say the smartphone is a game changer in our lives for many reasons. One is our depth of knowledge that we generally need to ask students. If we can Google it, we probably don't have to ask it anymore, right? So now we, what we have to do is make sure that, and this is reflected in the standards. When new standards are coming out, they're more inquiry-based. So you know the why of things that happen, like do mountains become volcanoes? Can a mountain become a volcano? Let's figure it out, right? And so that's, that's what a science standard would be like, or a science curriculum would look like. And it would tie to an inquiry's science standards. We'd be able to explore and figure that out. Otherwise, if it's just, what's the capital of Idaho? I'm sorry, that, what was that joke? It was like, my teacher said that I'd never have a calculator with me when I was walking around or I can, I'm not doing it justice, but we do, we do have a calculator with us everywhere we go. So if we rely, rely on those simplistic kind of rote elements, we may be missing the boat. We need to teach them, but we need to take it the next step further. And that's what I would say is the biggest difference in the standards that we see coming out now.
Wonderful. Just one more opportunity if there's any other questions. If not, thank you very much, Dr. Luhaki, for the presentations. We'll move on to seven point zero five, proposed budget capital maintenance and improvements project. So, Dr. Engel?
Yeah, so this is, this element is a part of our monitoring for OE twelve and OE five per governance structure. Also, given the board's interest in being aware of the components of the proposed budget and facilities development in a timely manner, this report's given in the early spring or spring or early summer, so the board's aware of projects that are taking place over summer. Oftentimes, board members will get questions like, why is the crane over at Emerson? You know, and so this allows you to be aware of the projects that are going on around the, the school district, but it does tie to our monitoring as a part of our governance structure. No actions required, but questions or discussion are certainly encouraged, especially as it ties to our long-range facilities planning that we're in the midst of.
Okay, well, I'm excited to be here tonight for several reasons. Number one is your decision to come into the auditorium tonight was a really wise one because if we're in the gymnasium, there is no air conditioning and it would be about 15 degrees warmer right now. So whoever made that decision should be commended. I'm excited because we're working on that long-range plan and so whatever I give you tonight is really just a Band-Aid into what we're long-range, what we're going to be able to do. And so I'm excited about that for the potential as we move forward with that long-range plan. What we're going to be able to do for our students and our staff is just going to be amazing as we put that together. So capital improvements, just want you to know, and some of you already know this, but we do have a process in place. And so that process is every fall, I sit down with the building principal, I sit down with the building engineer, and we sit down and we go through capital improvement projects. We evaluate what's going on in the building. Literally, we walk every square inch of that building during that time so that we can do that internal evaluation. We talk about any new potential projects that are, that they would like to see. Then we prioritize them. I asked the principals and the administrators to put together a prioritize, what are your top three priorities? And then we take those back and then we work with them from all the schools. We put a estimate together for any new projects that they may want to see. We add that to the capital improvement database. You'll see tonight in that other book that I've given you, won't go into great detail with that, but that's that database. That's where we get our capital improvements from. You'll see there's about 80,000, 80 million dollars worth of projects identified there. If you'd looked last year, it was about 73 million, but we'll be taking that facility study that Bray has done and we're starting to incorporate that into our database. So we put those two, mirror those two together over the next year. And then we bring the board, the recommendations to the board, and that's what you're seeing tonight. And then once we do that, then we design those projects and put them in place. And so what does that decision-making criteria look like? We look at safety and security. We look at regulatory compliance. Are there any board initiatives? A few years ago, the board gave us, gave us initiative, hey, we want secure entrances. And so we did that. That was a part of that initiative to change the plan that we were actually going to be going with because of that. We look at improvement and maintain learning environment. I'm excited tonight to show you one of those, those projects that's going to really have an impact on our students. And then we consider priorities provided by individual learning teams and consider operating costs and then we look at the level of community support. We never want to bring anything to the board that we don't think the community would support. We look at board initiatives and what are they? OE twelve, which was new this year, so that, that allowed Patty and I to sit down and go through that and really look at some of those needs that were out there and, and make sure that we're lining ourselves up to what the board wanted in their OE twelve. Ensure equity, equitable and, and look at the strategic plan that identifies that. And I think that really came into play this year, especially when you talk about one of the projects, and we'll talk about that. I always wondered, okay, why are we doing something at one school, but we're not doing it at the other school? And really focusing on that, I think, made a difference in what we're, we're bringing forward. And then the long-range plan that is going to have a huge impact on our district, accountability to the public, practice good stewardship. And then we looked at the 10-year facility plan. So all those things that come into play as we look at those projects. So when we start talking about projects, what are the things you're going to see? And I think one of the things, phase two of the planetarium, we did some upgrades to that planetarium probably about seven years ago now. And what this really does is it takes us to the next level. In fact, our planetarium, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be upgrading all the, the core of the system. And so it goes beyond what we talk in terms of space initiatives. It goes into cells and we can go into anatomy, the heart, human, basically, we can do anything, geography, and even into architecture and STEM. It really gives that opportunity for students. And one of the reasons that we haven't done that in the past is we've really had no, no real good plan. And so working with the science teachers at Central, every elementary student will spend at least two periods inside Central Planetarium, or we're calling it Exploratorium, because it goes beyond the planetarium experience. And so every student from every elementary, and hopefully that'll excite them about science and technology and math. We're looking at redoing the Sutton Gymnasium floor, really just sanding that down. We're putting a new logo on that and then replacing stage LED lighting in the stage area. If we look at Logan, this is one that we took off last year when we set aside money for COVID, replaced the theater seats at the Logan Auditorium. Logan Middle, this last year, we had a boiler go out. We have five boilers that run that system. So we have one boiler go out. Typically, we can run it with, with four, but during the really coldest parts of the season, we need all five boilers, so we're replacing that boiler. And then at Longfellow, replacing the gym floor. If you can see there in that picture, it identifies, we're starting to see some gaps in our gym floor and so we've seen some, some injuries, not significant, but some minor injuries. And so we need to address that, really became a safety issue that really pushed that to the top. And then at Polytechnic Institute, tuck point in the building, and this is really preventive maintenance. This is in the 1905 portion of the building on the, facing the north. We really saw, hey, we really need to do some tuck point in there to prevent any water penetration into the building and so we're getting at that early. Hamilton Elementary School, if you remember, and we're excited about that. And I want to tell you that if anybody wants a tour, maybe we could set up a board time where we could all tour this together. We're getting close. We think that we're going to be set up, we're going to be ready for our school to begin, at least the classroom portion. And so on July 15th, we hope when, when school starts, they'll be in that new portion. But when we did that bid, we did an alternate bid for adding windows into the cafeteria, which will now be the cafeteria of the old gym. And so we accepted that, but we said we'd pay for that out of capital improvement. So we'll have natural lighting into the cafeteria. Again, an area that's used for large group instruction and other areas, so that's a part of that. At Hinton Elementary School, we'll replace the southwest service door, which was really the storefront of the area. And so you can kind of see there, over the years, it's, it's, there's some rust there that we're trying to prevent any major problems from happening. At North Woods Elementary, this is really one of the bigger projects that we're going to do. We're going to install digital control systems and replace the VAV boxes. It's a, it's an immediate upgrade for our HVAC system and replace the chiller, chiller panel as well. We'll really see a payback from this and really sets that school up to be really good for the next 30 years. So that's upgrading that system there. As you can tell, it looks pretty nice now and now we got the bones working with that as well, so we'll go from there. Southern Bluffs Elementary, a new motor for our gym partition door. And so we'll be replacing that. We look at State Road Elementary, just a small project. One of the ways it works is we put all these big priorities together and then we have these small projects that we kind of fill the gaps. We've had a, a need for a new floor in the, in the kitchen for a while and so this is, finally, we're getting to that. At Summit Elementary School in the special needs area classroom, we're going to add a, a bathroom. It's right now, when they need to do some things with the special needs students, we have to take them down the hall. This makes it a little bit easier where we can go into a, a secure place, a place that's confidential and they can take care of their needs there, right inside the classroom. And then if we look at district-wide projects, paving maintenance, one of the things that we do every year is when we walk in the capital improvement project, we look at areas, we always put a little allowance in there so that we can do the small things, this crack filling, filling in holes and those things in our parking lots. A and E Consulting, as the board or anybody comes up with any ideas, sometimes we have to go to engineering and architectural engineering to get, get some bids or get some thoughts. And so we use, we use that for that reason. Environmental testing remediation, if we have any asbestos or we have anything that comes up, PFOS, for instance, on the island, then we use our funds for that, those emergency reasons. And then security issues. This year is a significant amount of dollars. It's really replacing the cameras and some of the security systems that we put in in 2009. So they're 12 years old now and so we have to start replacing some of those things. And so we're doing that. We're looking at a web-based system. I say that because web-based means that very easily, even though we're putting cameras in schools today, depending on the needs or the amount of schools we have in the future, we can move those very easily. And so those are things that we're working on and expanding some of our card access areas inside the district. So those are the security issues that we're really looking at as it relates to that. And so when you look at all that, the projects come to $1.2 million with a contingency of about $11,000. And so not a lot of projects, but there's some significant ones in there, especially when I talk in terms of what we're doing at Central that will impact every student in the district and then the HVAC stuff that we're doing at North, North Woods. And so I open up to any questions.
Questions from the board members?
Mr. Levina, you mentioned that this will be integrated with the long-range facilities plan.
Yes.
Can you give any comments as to how that, you see that process moving forward? These are all projects that are, what, what does this mean going forward with, in light of the long-range?
A couple of things. Number one, when we reduce our footprint, if, if we do that as a district, we know that we have declining enrollment, we do that, we reduce our footprint so we can focus on, on the schools that are viable, so we can do more for our students in those areas. That's number one. The other thing that was a part of the long-range facility plan is that facility study that was done. And so they, we really brought in experts from every field that walked every area of the school. And so in addition to the stuff that I have identified, that's been identified. So now it gives us a wider scope of projects that we really look at, really looking at putting our facilities in place that are going to be there for the next 40 years. And so you as a board can focus on educational needs of our students if we can do that. And I say, that's the biggest part of that.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did. Thanks.
Other questions?
As far as the planetarium?
Yes.
I think that's been impacted too because the planetarium at UWL is not going to be in existence anymore, correct? in existence anymore, correct?
Yeah, I didn't want to say anything, because I didn't want to offend all the UWL staff that are here, but I'm excited about that portion. We are going to have the, the best planetarium system in western Wisconsin. And so, not only is it going to impact our students, it has the impact of our whole community and others who might use those facilities as well. So, really excited about that.
And I just wanted to say, I know that area at Summit that you talked about, when I was up there three, four years ago and visiting that classroom, that area, that was talked about then, so it's, it's good to see that, that special needs area is, is going to get some attention.
Yeah, we figured out a way where we could do that, and we, it took us some time to plan that out, but I think it's going to be a big impact to not only the staff, but the students as well. Yeah. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you, and I look forward to working with you on the long-range plan. It's going to be good.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Levina. We'll move on to the announcements portion, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Como.
Well, last week was the annual meeting for CISA 4, which means all of the different areas come together, and there's certain areas that have to re-vote their representative in. So Bangor revoked in Julie Myers, Lafarge did Erin Nemec, Wespe did Gerald Bothell, and Blair Taylor did Sarah Staff. Those four people actually have been on the board for the last couple of years, so once you're on, they don't let you off for some reason. We also had Josh, John Ashley come talk, who's from Wasby, and something interesting that he talked about was, at a state level, they're going to stop using words like equity and equality in their statements. They're feeling as though sometimes they can become kind of divisive, where it brings like a wall, if you say the word, it might stop the conversation. So that's something you might want to look forward to reading in one of their magazines. I'm, I'm thinking that it's going to change, you know, how, how some of the school districts have done some of their wording, but I wanted to bring that up. And then, also, I was re-elected as the vice chair, the Wasby Resolutions Committee person, and the Wasby delegate alternate, so I have another busy year. So, that's been the excitement last week. Any questions outside of the?
When do they ask for Wasby resolutions? Is that at the end of the fall, at the end of the summer?
It's the, it happens in the fall usually, yep. And so, they pick two people out of the CISA group, out of each CISA, and then, if you're interested, I can put your name into?
No, no, I'm just thinking that we need to start, if we want to present something, we should start thinking about it now, to start writing a resolution if we want to, because sometimes you can work with other school districts or?
Yeah, it would be a good idea if you wanted to get something out there, because they usually start the meetings, I think, like September is the first meeting, and then November is the second meeting. And then, of course, the annual convention is January, so, just for timing for everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Como.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes, I have a couple of updates, and I like sharing these updates. They're almost like good news, you know? It feels like a little bit of a highlight. So, the LPEF helped sponsor the district retirement dinner that happened last week, and also published the full-page ad kind of saluting the retirees. And we also have a new grant. It's the Tisher Power of Nature Fund, founded with the help of Kathy and Rob Tisher, and it's designed to inspire teachers to help guide students and parents in seeing the benefits in nature. And some of the projects that they kind of had in mind were field trips to explore nature or land conservation projects, onsite school experiences, co-curricular after-school activities, fees to hire speakers or guides, and also to support the costs of students exploring nature-oriented career experiences. And that was announced in the media. I think there was both Channel 8, Channel 19, and the Tribune covered that. So, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. Bowman. The only announcement I have is that we will be canceling the Board of Education meeting for July 5th, since that is a holiday for the staff here at the school district of La Crosse, and we'd like to ensure they get a chance to have a day off, you know, for, to spend time with their families. So we will cancel that board meeting. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
Just a couple of items. There's a Board of Education Professional Development Survey, which is open from June 7th through June 21st, so look for that in your email. Our goal is to learn how you learn best, so that we can provide professional development that meets your needs in the way that you learn. So Laura and I are excited for that feedback, so that we can help ensure folks get what they need. COVID-19, so we wrapped up the school year on June 3rd, which was very exciting, last Thursday, and for the summer, we've relaxed some of our masking and social distancing standards, as you can see here today. We're following the CDC's guidelines as far as vaccination, and the one caveat to that is when we're with children who are not vaccinated, we're going to mask, you know, as our teachers would be, in order to respect the fact that they have not been able to be vaccinated yet. So, that is the one caveat there. Starting July 1, high schoolers will have had sufficient time to be vaccinated, and so, we're not going to require masks and social distance at that point. We're still debating for middle schoolers, because those are mixed age groups where some students are not able to be vaccinated, and so, we need to ensure that we can understand how separated those sixth graders are from seventh and eighth graders who would have had an opportunity. And then, more generally speaking, we're looking at, you know, if our COVID numbers are down below a certain threshold, like one per 100,000 individuals, you know, would we move away from some of these preventative measures at that point too, because the rate of COVID is so low? And so, even if we don't have access to vaccines for elementary students, so we're in the process of evaluating that as well, continuing to work with our medical advisor, the health department, on all those recommendations, so. Any questions on COVID stuff? And then, legislative update. So the Joint Finance Committee approved, well, brought a budget out of committee. They, as far as education goes, they rejected most of the governor's proposed budget and had a little bit left in there for special education and a mental health grant, and then, they set aside $350 million for the next biennium, intended to be earmarked for education. Essentially, it's no new money for schools for the next two years. They're expecting schools, as they, I think, put it, to rely on the ESAR funds, the federal money that has been provided in light of the pandemic, to support schools for the next two years. The difficulty with that, for, for many reasons, for, there's a number of reasons that it's difficult. One is that ESAR money is one-time money, and so, we won't keep up with inflation if new money isn't provided to schools in the meantime. And the money that is provided by the federal government is categorical, it's only for certain things, so we can't use it for the range of things that we would use general education money for from the state. And so, I suspect there will be a long and contentious debate over these funds and the budget. Hopefully, some things decided by July 1 per statute. Worst-case scenario, hopefully by the 4th Monday in October, so we can set our levy, knowing what the budget is. But I expect it to be contentious between the legislature and the governor to come up with the final budget. Any questions there as far as those things go?
I have one. So what happens if you do it in October and you don't have a clear idea of what the budget will be?
I don't think it's been done before, but my understanding is the last year's budget would maintain status quo, so the, there would be no new funding, but we would continue to receive the funding we've received historically. So I think it's uncharted territory. It would essentially mean there's no new money, you know, for things, so we would continue on with the existing, essentially, laws in place for how schools are funded and whatnot.
Thank you very much. We will move on to agenda planning. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 21st, 2021 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second?
So moved by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to approve the June 21st, 2021 Board of Education agenda. Are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried, and we will move on to 10.01, board debriefing. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cooper Stoll.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. So the purpose of the board debriefing is to focus on the board performance for the evening, but I will start by saying that I appreciated Dr. Engel providing additional context, I think, for the monitoring reports. I think that's very helpful, particularly for new board members, but also just as a reminder for current board members. So the main question that I'm going to focus on this evening is, is the one that Sun Prairie uses, which is how much time did we spend focusing on students for tonight? And I think that a number of the reports that we discussed, particularly the result 3.2 that Dr. LaHockey presented, as well as the achievement reduction, definitely focused on students, and I would even argue that the capital maintenance program that Mr. Levina discussed, offered a number of examples of how these improvements will enhance learning and development of students in our district. Obviously, there were some, some reports that did not necessarily lend themselves to that, but the majority of time, we focused on that, and I think that that would be a thumbs up for us, where that, as far as, as far as that's concerned. I'll also comment on board, board member questions, were directed around just further understanding the presentation of those reports, as opposed to individual directives. And I do want to be clear that there, that I am all for not discouraging questions related to metrics moving forward, but as I brought up at the previous debriefing before last, I think we need to think about as a board how we do that and discuss that, so that we don't violate policy around individual directives. And the final thing that I will say is that I hope as we move forward, we hear more comment and feedback from other board members who have so much to contribute to these discussions. And I'll end it there, Dr. Jimenez.
All right, thank you so very much. All right, with that, that's 6:57, we will adjourn. Thank you.